All right, Mr. and Mrs. Bob called meeting. Mr. Oxon, would you please lead us to the flag of leaders?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could show all board members are present. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
To public comments. Per policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, a parent or the guardian of an enrolled district student, or any enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must physically be present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotment of 30 minutes will be given for public comment. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. A translator may be used to translate verbal communication to the board. If such translation services are used, six minutes shall be given to that participant with one of the first three minutes being designated to the total time allotment. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to hear these rules, they may be directed to end their comment. Mrs. Steely, got no papers?
No.
On to reports, the district administrator's report.
All right, so I have several things to let the board and public know. One, that tonight marks the first night that the board is moving away from in-person reports as it relates to internal reports. Those reports have been placed online in a video format for the board and public to view in advance of the meeting. And then the idea is that not only will it expedite the meeting itself, but then allow the board a chance to digest that information and come prepared for some questions. And we'll try this for a couple of meetings and see if it works and how well it works. Student councils and some of those reports, we would still have in person, although tonight the student council was unable to attend, so they are recorded online. But it'd be important for us to let the public know that if they want to see the reports themselves, the presentations, that they'll have to hop online and view those in our board doc. So we'll give this a try and see how the board and the public think this. So that's the first thing. Secondly, moving to the election, at this point, we still do not have any writing candidates that have officially declared candidacy for the Area 3 West, part of rural, outside of the city. So we're still looking for some people interested in that, feeling Mrs. Werth's position. February 1st, it'll be the first Thursday in February, and obviously the first date in February, that'll be our policy and curriculum meeting prior to that first board meeting on the second Monday in February. So that'll come up on us quickly. And then finally, many of us, six of us, Mr. Bailey, Mrs. Oxl, Mr. Bosworth, Mr. Chosum, and Dr. Johnson and I attended the state conference, State Education Convention down in Milwaukee, Tuesday through Friday of last week, and wanted to take this as an opportunity to share some of the things that we saw. We won't necessarily give you every session that we attended, but what I would ask is that each of us maybe share two sessions that you attended, those that you felt were either extremely interesting, something unique, something you didn't know, or whatever criteria it is you wish to share those top two topics or sessions. And then also maybe share one thing with the board and the public, something that you learned either in a session or from networking and other people that you feel is something we should at least consider implementing, whether it be in a small fashion or large scale. Doesn't necessarily have to be something immediately, but something that you think, hey, this would be interesting and something I think that we could benefit from in the Richland School District. So I'll go first, and then we'll just kind of go around, starting with Mr. Bailey next. But two topics, the sessions that I attended personally, one was a legal update, specifically as it related to some of the Title IX changes and gender identity, the law pertaining to those things. And then also, one of the most more fascinating ones that I attended was a session on Wisconsin's public opinion on education. This was conducted by the Marquette Polling Division of University Marquette, and they polled Wisconsin in a variety of questions ranging from referendum to who should decide curriculum, to how the schools across the state responded to the pandemic, did they open too soon, not soon enough, et cetera. One interesting statistic that I thought, though, regarding referendum and how it relates to the Richland School District, was back in 2012, this question was surrounding, how much do you feel as whoever was receiving, as a respondent, how much do you feel public education needs to be more funded by the state? And then the other question was, how much do you value keeping your property taxes down? Okay? And so in 2012, just under half of the people were opposed to increasing spending on public education. And about half, 50%, 51%, were in favor of reducing property taxes. And from 2012 to 2018, those lines separated in more favoring public education spending and didn't care quite so much about their property taxes. It peaked in 2018, where 60% of the people favored an increase of funding to schools and 39% favored keeping their property taxes low. That was in 2018, and since then, those numbers have come back together and even crossed. And so as it sits in 2023, we are right back to the same numbers we were in 2012, where more people, 47%, are supporting increase in public education spending and 50% are in favor of reducing property taxes. So over the last decade, it's interesting to see, we're right back to where we were 10 years ago. So that was something that I found fascinating in that particular session. And then the one thing that I think that we can bring back, in fact, Friday morning I had breakfast with our admin team talking about what we can do internally as it relates to special education and our intervention strategies, so we can systematically improve that process for both, both the referral process, getting kids, students help that they need from an intervention standpoint, whether it's academically, behaviorally, socially, whatever, at an early age in a systematic process. So we just started having that discussion, like I said, on Friday morning, and that'll be an ongoing discussion that we have and something that was prompted directly from the convention itself. So that's what I had. Again, I'll just pass it along to Mr. Bailey.
Back to Mr. Board. So one of the sessions I was at was Statement of Purpose, Examining Your Mission, Goals, and Vision, and that is specifically for the school board, for the direction of how we provide guidance for schools. The overreaching purpose of that is you have to know where you're going to know if you got there. So with that, it would be, it was actually presented by the Losby folks, that they have a program that we could invest in to help guide the board to discern what our mission really is, what our goals are from that, and then what our vision is from there. One of the parts of that was defining what the mission really should be. And it needs to be something that is succinct, something that could fit out in front of a T-shirt, because most mission statements are just way too long and you can't recite it. So knowing what that is, so I thought that was quite interesting. The other one that ties right into that was strengthening your board's effectiveness through continuous improvement. And one of the points that they made was, we expect our students, we expect our staff, we expect our administration to have continual learning. We don't have that set built in for school board members. So everyone else is expected to go out and continue to grow their knowledge set, and we don't have that. So I thought that was really interesting, and I'd never thought of it that way before. So for us to create conditions that promote learning, and then with the mission, vision, and goals, what is our moral imperative? That was something that the presenter drove forward, that if you don't know what your moral imperative is, why are we here? And it's for the kids, so how do we make sure that we're taking care of them? One of the overreaching things that all the sessions that I had was communication, which I thought was really interesting, that they talked about having communication in every single piece of everything that you touch with the community. So our information is getting out to them, but more importantly, how are we receiving communication back from our parents, from our students, from our staff? And if we're not open to hearing that information coming back and then doing something with it, then it makes it very challenging. So I think we can all improve on our communication all the way through, and so I think for us, that's probably one of the good goals and a good target to have.
In the morning, I attended the delegate orientations, since it was my first year to kind of know how the voting would happen. I did want to say that the very first question they asked is how many, there were over 300 schools there, so it was pretty overwhelming. It was packed. And the first question was, how many people were in favor of the Packers winning and how many weren't? And then it was overwhelming, the Packers, but the people that didn't vote for the Packers were asked to stand, and none of them did. I just wanted to put that on the record.[667.12][667.12](laughter) Too afraid, I think. So it was, but it was really interesting, as the 300 delegates came together, we each had one vote for our district. It was interesting to listen to the different districts tell either why they wanted to change a resolution, why they wanted to adopt a resolution, or why they wanted to completely delete a resolution. And I did find it interesting that I felt the rural schools were different than the metropolitan schools. There's just a difference there. I also attended, of course, calling all new school board members. It was in a format of a roundtable discussion. I always enjoy that because you kind of get other people's opinions and thoughts firsthand, and then you kind of bounce things off each other. It was also a great way to network with districts that were close to us and districts that were away from us. You know, and it was interesting to see their challenges, the things, some of the things are the same. You know, a big thing we heard was referendum, possible referendums, that was a common theme. So I just felt that that was really interesting to see how they dealt with things in just different ways. I think as far as something that I would like to see, I think we really need to promote how our district is different and changing, what is unique on things that we are doing, and we need to showcase those. We need to show how we are different. And I would just like to end on that. On that note, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Perkins for being named the 2024 Educator of the Year by the Richland Juvenile. I know not only your education, but you were instrumental in establishing the Richland Rock Program and the Aquatic Center here, and you always have the children's best interests at heart, and I just want to say well done and well deserved.
I went to two sessions. The first one that I'll speak about was about ransomware, very interesting. According to these guys, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. Some guys from private sector, DPI, Skyward, all presented on this session. Very interesting, there is basically an army of 450 people around the state called the Critical Response Team, funded by Homeland Security, so if, and more likely when, a district is hit by this, we can call these guys and they can come in and show up and help us deal with that. I had a big list of questions that I got gathered during the session, and I will sit down with the IT department and run through those questions and just make sure we're in a good spot. I think we're in a pretty good spot, we have a good IT department, but we'll ask those questions regardless. The other interesting session I sat in was a district, very similar to our size, made the switch to go from contracted busing to owning and running their own transportation. So that was a really interesting thing to think about, and all the different pieces that people are probably not thinking of or prepared for if and when they make that switch. They made it just because they weren't getting the quotes that they wanted. In the end, they did realize some cost savings and some other benefits to it, but obviously one of the biggest factors right up front is purchasing buses and where you're going to keep them, and at about $110,000 each, you have to have a lot of cash to make that initial purchase. But once that initial purchase is made, there is some cost savings and some benefits after that. Not necessarily suggesting that we do that, but it was definitely an interesting session to listen to.
For me, because of the many hats that I sometimes wear, I went to a session called Hot Topics on Special Ed and Student Services, and also the one that Mr. Board attended, Title IX and What's New and What's Next, and also New Developments in School Law, which was a 45-minute session with about 87 PowerPoint slides. So that wasn't the best. As far as what I would bring back, I would certainly echo what Mr. Board said. The four of us meeting on Friday morning, I think we had a very good conversation about special ed and DPI, and we can kind of go with that. And then the last thing I just want to say before I kind of pass the mic is, this was the first year that I had been to this. I had been asked numerous years and just never worked for whatever reason, but I thought it was very beneficial. One of the things was actually being able to talk with board members away from this. I think I spoke with both of you probably more in those four days than I have in months. Even though I was at the front of some jokes sometimes, it was still a good conversation, so I very much appreciate that.
I too always loved the opportunity to learn, and this is a place where I wish I could multiply myself, so I could go to lots of different sessions. The ones that stuck out most to me was one of the first ones especially, it's called Systems Approach to Comprehensive School Improvement. And it was Fort Atkinson Schools who actually took the four sections of the State Report Card, because they said, we were trying to figure out how to grow our school and what we wanted to do to approve, and then they said, and then that report card comes out and we always say, oh yeah, we hate that. Why do we always get kind of jabbed in the back end? They said, why don't we just take that in the front end and make some growth opportunities with it? So they showed us and actually taught us a few things on how to figure in, because if you've ever looked at the report card document, it's like 60 pages long, to tell you how they figured out all these things. And so they taught us how to do a couple of those sections, of which I stayed up and messed around with until way too late some of those nights. But I, that's one of the things I would like to do, is to work with our administrative team and then with our teachers and staff about really creating some tactile growth measures for us as we move through this next school year. And then another one I went to was called Shifting Literacy with Montello School District. The reason I went to that was because you all maybe heard there was something called Wisconsin Reads or Act 20 that was just approved this last fall, maybe last summer, it's all blending in. Anyway, this school district has already made a lot of the shifts that a lot of school districts are going to be asked to make in this coming year. Like, we are currently in the middle of a pilot of two ELA English Language Arts programs, and we are waiting with bated breath to hear what the DPI decides on. They're actually going to tell us the resources we can purchase, because they will give us a little kickback if we use the ones that they say. So we're waiting. Hopefully, the ones that we've chosen are on the list, so we can then decide to move forward. And so I've got the names of the teachers and the schools, the people that can help support our transition also from Montello School District, and a lot of documentation that they've already created in the front end, so that I can adopt some of those pieces and help ours go seamlessly. So I appreciate this opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for either myself or any of the folks that attended the state convention or other? Thank you.
Board member reports.
I just got out of the Richland School District Foundation meeting, it was this evening at 5:30. One of the things that we decided on was adding the IT officer position, and so we approved that job description. We did have election of officers for this coming year. Chris Shannon will continue as president, Greg Okenour will continue as vice president, Jamie Breton will be secretary, Jamie Warren will continue as treasurer, and Luke Moore will be the IT officer for that. And we had discussions on, we know we need to clean up some of the information that are given to the students with the scholarships, both on how to apply, how some of these scholarships are awarded, and then also the follow-up on that, what they need to do to actually get the scholarship money based on the criteria for those individual scholarship boards. So we're probably going to be working on that. We also approved expanding the board to nine people instead of seven. And to fill those two open slots, we are accepting applications for those that are going to be due on March 1st of this year. And we're just simply asking for a bio and why you want to be a member of the Richland School District Foundation. So there will be information that will be put out on Facebook through the school page, also be in the observer and the shopping list, through their information.
Student council report.
So student council members were unable to be here tonight. They did upload the video, it's about a three and a half minute video, talked about some of the new members that they had, as well as some of their committee updates, so I would encourage the board and public to view that as well.
Drug-Free Communities Grant Report.
Okay, also, Betsy Raisler had submitted her presentation on the DFC grant and an update on that. That video is in there, the slide deck is in there as well. Betsy is present tonight, if the board members had any questions for her after watching that video, that would be a great time to get verification of that.
I have a couple.
Yeah.
Let me take my paper here.
Take your time.
So I guess one of the questions that I had, because I've served in different roles with other community events, what I'm wondering about is, is the fiscal agent paid? Is that something, I'm just questioning that, you know, does a school receive any reimbursement back?
Yep, the grant allows us to offset some administrative costs, 5% of my salary and benefits, 3% of the business official and 3% of our bookkeeper, to help monitor and take care of the financial requirements as the due sharing of the grant.
Okay, okay. And then I guess another question that I had was, I'm sure with Mr. Bosworth having, you know, in his new position, and also Mrs. Walters, do you feel that, since this wouldn't be, we wouldn't even know until like September whether it's going to be approved, do you feel that maybe that would run a little smoother? You know, do you have any concerns there? I'm just wondering.
Yep, I think I would ask respectfully, of course, then we answer that question when we get down to the action items and talk about the renewal of the grant itself, and I'd be more than happy to answer those questions as we talk about whether or not we're renewing it.
Okay. I guess I follow that. Thank you.
Yeah.
On one of the slides, there was mention of, one of the things against it was willing to change. What kind of things do you see that people are not willing to change on, or would we want to take those?
Thank you for your question. So the process of doing prevention involves observation around local conditions based on community level risk factors. So for example, if retailers are allowing the sale of alcohol to young people, or private property owners are hosting parties on their property, those kinds of things maybe have been normalized. And so when we're requesting changes like that, a coalition is working on changes like that, some people might love like that. So does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
To the bullying task force.
Okay, similarly, this was uploaded and is available for the public and board members to view now, and it was available earlier. Lisa Brown, Makela Taft, which was Makela Bleeker, Lisa Goff and Jessica Brown are kind of leading up the task force itself. Lisa Brown is available here tonight. I did just want to point out, just so everybody knows, that they're having a meeting on Tuesday, tomorrow, as in
Yes, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, at 5 o'clock in the intermediate school, if anybody's interested in joining that meeting. So any questions from the board regarding that?
I have a question. I noticed that you had four confirmed bullying reports, like in each quarter. What my question is, are they repeat offenders, or are they all different? And then, and I'm sorry if I missed that in the presentation, then how is that handled? Is that the parents called in, or kind of what is the procedure there?
I'm giving one second here, because I want to double check. So there was one repeat offender from first quarter to second quarter, and then during second quarter, one of those, or two of those confirmed bullying cases was from the same kiddo. So if that makes sense. So what usually happens, if it's, we have a sheet that we could work our way through to determine the level and severity of the bullying, and then that determines what the consequence is for that student. So when this does happen, I do try to have phone calls, emails, if I can get the parent to come in, we try to get them to come in and try to figure it all out. On the backside of it with students, we really try to meet with the students after everything has kind of happened, we've kind of processed through it, either, well, usually individually, but then we come back together to kind of be like, okay, what can we do going forward? What do we need to try to help the student understand so it doesn't happen again? With the student that it's happened a handful of times, it's actually gone back and forth between conflict, but then crossed the line with bullying because we've had those conversations and it didn't stop. And all of those, when I was looking, all of them are verbal types of bullying, so it's not necessarily online, it's all verbal. Thank you.
Ms. Brown, with, I know we addressed the students that are doing the bullying. What kind of support is given to those that are on the receiving side of that, especially if it's from multiple people, or, yeah, we reported it, we thought it was handled, and then all of a sudden it happens again? How are those students being helped?
So a lot of that is just following up with them. It's not, we're doing the best that we can. So usually after an incident happens, we really try between myself and Mrs. Taft, who are both in the building, we really try to pull those kiddos in and check maybe once a week, you know, for a couple of weeks, and then it might go at every two weeks, or it might just say, hey, how you doing? But really working with kind of empowering those students that they have a voice. And so a lot of it is just check-ins, and it's either a brief check-in, or it could be a little bit of a longer check-in, and they're not really planned, just as we see fit or as we see needed. I've tried to follow up with some parents of, I know that maybe just need that little more of a TLC approach when it comes to what supports they really want their student to see, or what to have at school. We've offered the telehealth counseling piece that we have through Pawkett, so thank you for putting that through for the MOU. I don't know off the top of my head, I don't think any of our kids that were necessarily the victim of bullying are in that, but we have some that are on our watch list that are taking part in that. And so that's been a huge resource in our building. I think we're up to probably nine or 10, it could be even 10 to 11, 12, that are actually taking part of that. So, but it's just really a lot of just giving those kids that voice and making sure they're advocating for themselves and just checking in, so making sure they're staff know about it, too.
For the confirmed cases on the receiving end, or is it like standard process if the family is notified, or does it just depend?
No, families are all notified, so on No, families are all notified, so on hold ends.
Yep. Thank you.
Mrs. Brown, that, the kind of friendship classmate contract? Would you be willing to speak on that, just so the board members kind of have an idea of, just an interesting way of going about discipline?
So, what Mr. Hunter is referring to is, I believe Mrs. Taft is the one that came up with that. So, when we are having conflict between our students, we have, we will bring them in, and we'll go over, you know, can we be a friend, or can we just be a classmate? So, we look at kind of the differences. And we've had a couple kiddos that they, they want to be friends, but they don't necessarily know that what they're doing isn't very friendly. And so we kind of go through, what does that look like for a classmate, or for a friend? And then they have to agree that, hey, we're going to be a classmate, or we're going to be a friend, and what does that look like? They have to sign and they have to date. And that way then, it's kind of that contract coming back to it of, hey, if we're having problems, this is what we agreed to, and how are we not meeting this, or how are we meeting it? I probably used it a little bit more last year. I cannot speak for Mrs. Taft, as she is usually the one that kind of takes all of that on to do that contract with the students when there is conflict going on. But I know she has used that. And it's been quite, it's been beneficial for our kiddos, especially in some of our older grades, where they're, they just struggle. And so, it's that first step, how do we resolve that conflict?
Is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of January 4th, 2024?
A motion.
Motion was made by Mr. Bailey, is there a second? Second by Ms. Traxel. Discussion. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of January 8th, 2024? So moved. Motion made by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman. Discussion. Ms. Traxel?
Aye.
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 All right. Onto the approval of statement of cash.
I move we approve the statement of cash dated January 17th, 2024.
Motion was made by Mr. Dowdner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Mrs. Mertz. Mr. Bosworth, anything you need to add?
I think I would just comment that the last time we were sitting in this same scenario, I remarked all the community first bank balance was low, and we have deposited a lot of money over LGIP for interest reasons, and noticed that balance is higher now. We've been receiving some tax levy payments, so as those come in, those get deposited and then transferred over after that.
Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
It's approval of invoices?
I move we approve community first bank general checking accounts, checks number 85932 through 85967, ACH number 232400775 through 232400881, and EFT number 20230055 through 20230059, for a net total of $325,609.49. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion was made by Mr. Dowdner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Hunter. Mr. Bosworth, anything you'd like to add?
Just a couple things. On page three, very near the top there, you see a $2,500 expenditure for schedule support for school and district leaders, first educational resource. This was Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Board and Mr. Joe Sam and our building principals, meeting with a consulting company to examine building schedules and trying to figure out if there is a better way to do it, what would that look like? And then the second thing I would point out, on page seven, very near the top as well, you'll see an expenditure for $3,600. Zimmerman speaking in consulting, a little over a year ago, school worked with consultants, Zimmerman and Gasser, so just wanted to point out, still working with those consultants, and that was a, and what was that?
Mr. Hunter?
Aye.
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 Mrs. Steele, consent agenda items?
Motion to accept the donation of shoulder pads and weight room equipment valued approximately $7,800 from the Richland Center Athletic Booster Club, per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation of a new exercise bike and replacement parts valued approximately $900 from the Richland Center Athletic Booster Club, per 7230. Motion to accept the donation of $2,000 for costs associated with them, identification and planning regarding adverse childhood experiences from the, it's the N-E-W-A-H-E-C, per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation of school supplies valued approximately $40 from Tammy Wheelock, per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation of school supplies valued at approximately $25 from Paul Murphy, per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation valued at approximately $250 from Thrive and Financial, per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation of bike helmets, gift cards, pizza cutters, sunglasses, and super ropes, valued at approximately $200 from Julie Cairns, per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation of $315.38 from Dunkin' Donuts to help cover the costs of unpaid family lunch accounts, per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation of a pole banner, valued at approximately $400 from Greenly Printing LLC, per policy 7230. And motion to approve the budget revisions for the 2324 fiscal year, as presented according with the provisions of the Wisconsin Statute 6590-5A. This shall require at least a two-thirds majority vote. And that is it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Oh, no motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Mertz, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman, discussion. Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
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 On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the Richland Center Athletic Booster Club, Alliance for Wisconsin Youth Coalition, Dollars for Development, Tammy Wheelock, Paul Murphy, Thrive and Financial, Julie Cairns, Dunkin' Donuts, and Greenly Printing for their generous donations. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, Mrs. Mertz, discussion. Mrs. Mertz?
Aye.
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 All right. Onto information and discussion items, district transfers and vacancies.
So on the support staff, transfers and vacancies for 2324, we still have some custodial positions open, as well as a cook, a cook position, and two cross categorical aid positions that are all open. And then in the vacancies, transfers of non-union jobs are exempt in play group. We have a nurse listed there as a vacancy. We do have an agreement with a nurse to be starting in our district on February 12th. So, hopefully we'll announce that name. Right now it is an agreement, and that is its tentative timeline for start date.
UW Madison Applied Population Laboratory and Enrollment Study.
All right. So a few years ago, I believe in 2021, the district hired UW Madison Applied Populations Lab to do an enrollment study for the district. They conducted that study at that point confirming our internal projections that we were declining in enrollment, not just, this was from our resident students. And with us having the potential of going to referendum and having it been three years out, we thought we should do another study and have UW Madison Population Lab conduct that study and do a full presentation at tonight's board meeting, so that we can see if our projections and if any trends have changed that we need to be aware of. So, David Egan Robertson from UW Madison Population Lab is here, and he will be presenting tonight on the study.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I assume everyone on this side wants to turn around. So, yeah, thanks for inviting me out. A colleague of mine, Sarah Kemp, actually prepared the report. Unfortunately, she had kind of a serious and sudden medical issue come up, so I'm pinch hitting for her tonight. But we kind of both do projections for law districts around the state, about 25 to 30 per year. And so we pretty much think along the same lines, and so I'll give you some details here about what we found when we did the projections for the Richland district going out 10 years. John, I sent a PDF version of all of these slides, so you don't have to, if you want to go back and reference them, they should be in your board docs materials. I've added a few items, and then there was also a written report that I sent to John, well, that Sarah did, that she sent to John. And that has more, you know, text, gives some text background and stuff like that. So, most of these slides are in there, I've added a few more, just to where I thought it might be useful or interesting to have a little bit more information. So tonight I'll be covering sort of some very broad topics, background, just, you know, what's been your district's recent full-time equivalents, or FTE student history. I'll explain a little bit why I'm using the term FTE here. Some history about the district's population, housing development in the area, what's been happening in terms of births recently, your kindergarten enrollment, which a lot of times is a strong indicator of what your future student population's going to look like. I'll cover the methodologies that we use, of how we project future students, and then the projections themselves. You know, how many students might the district expect in future years? I always start, I like to start with a couple of caveats, a little help from Yogi Bear here. We produce a range of projections, and the thing is that, and I'm the first to admit I've done this for years, you know, trying to project anything, whether it's people or anything else, you know, anything economic, it's an imprecise science. So we always provide a range of potential projections. We have to make certain assumptions about births in the area. Data that we get from the state is based on municipalities, and I know in a rural district like this, your district boundaries sometimes split a lot of towns, some of the outlying towns. So, we have to make kind of a judgment call on what municipalities' births we count in the process. And finally, we, you know, we have to kind of make assumptions about migration of families with children. There's no really good source of information in the US about people's movement. And when you're trying to narrow that down to families, and families with young children, it's very difficult to get. We use something called a grade progression ratio, or GPR for short, I'll talk more about that in a little bit. And that's really the way we kind of capture year-over-year change in your enrollment or the number of students. So migration is kind of implicit in using those rates, that there's no real explicit way of measuring migration, particularly for families with children. I always like to bring in Homer here. There'll be a lot of data here, but again, you know, the, all the slides I'm showing you, all the graphs, all the tables, they're, you know, available, you can study them and, you know, more closely, at your leisure, whatever. You know, I'm hoping to do, I'll be showing a lot of stuff, but I'm hoping when I do this to, you know, create more of an impression, okay, what's going on with the population of young people in the Richland area? So, and also, what John asked us to do is what I'm going to call student projections, or FTE projections. Quite often, a lot of districts hire us to do enrollment projections. So that's basically, that's based on your, you know, the kids in seat counts that happen on the third Friday of September every year. So what we did for the projections here, I'll call student or cohort projections. So, kind of the basic formula is, you do start with those students who are kids in seats that count in September, subtract out the open enrollment incoming students, and then add in your open enrollment outgoing students. And there are a couple other classifications where students, you know, move between districts, but they're pretty minor. So anyway, what you end up with is, you know, the potential students who could be enrolled in the district. FTE isn't a favorite term, but I'll kind of use that for shorthand. So what would be the equivalent size of the student body? And I do want to note, this does not include any private school students, nor does it include any students who might be homeschooled full-time. So what is the district's recent FTE history? So here's a graph. The green line shows the full 4K through 12. The red line is just 5K through 12. In a lot of districts, 4K can be quite bouncy across the years, but in Richland's case, it's been pretty consistent. But what's really noticeable is, you had sort of a peak level of students in 2016, 17, close to 1,500. And you can see, it's been a pretty steady decrease since then, about, down about 200 students, or about 14% over those, what, seven years? Looking at them by the great current alignment of your schools here, first is 4K to 2 in your primary school. It was actually at its highest 10 years ago, was at 400. And you can see it slipped down over time. Well, it stayed fairly steady for a couple of years, but then began to slip down through 2021, 22, and then it's bounced back a little bit in the last two years. So you're down about 50 students in the primary grade levels. Grades three through six, that remained pretty steady, and see it was 436 a decade ago, stayed pretty steady for about five years, but then began to decline pretty sharply. And you can see now, it's over 100 lower than it was 10 years ago. Seven, eight, your middle school, it's quite a rise from 2014, 15, for the first three years, it went up, its high is 244, so it really jumped, started to come down a little bit the following year, stayed kind of level, and this most current year, it dropped again. So that's a little bit below where it was 10 years ago. And finally, at the high school level, 10 years ago was at 418, again, stayed kind of level for a few years, actually rose quite a bit. Two years ago, you had your largest cohort of students in grade, in the grade nine through 12 set, and that's dropped in the last couple of years, as you can see, back almost to where it was 10 years ago. So to just look at just the current year, you know, based in September. So in your primary grades, your largest, you have a pretty large cohort that's at the grade one level right now, 100 students, the others are smaller than that. At your intermediate grades, these are relatively low, certainly in comparison to some of those 4K to 2 classes, the largest one currently is the sixth grade with 89 kids. And then seven and eight, there's quite a difference between eight and seven right now. Eight is a relatively large cohort, but grade seven is actually the smallest size of any of the cohorts from 4K up through 12. the cohorts from 4K up through 12. And then your high school level. You can see these right now, your high school students, that these are really your large, four largest class cohorts right now. And, you know, as they graduate and are replaced by some of these smaller cohorts coming in, I mean, you do gain some kids into the public schools. I know the St. Mary's, the private Catholic school only runs through grade 8. I assume, you know, the public schools start picking up some of those kids, grades 9 and above. But anyway, those are, you know, quite large current cohorts for a district of your size. So that's just, you know, a little background on the last 10 years of history. What's happening with the district's population? So I like to always use, you know, a 10-year period between the two federal censuses, 2010 and 2020 in this case. The Richland School District, and this is total population, not just students we're talking about here. So this is the total population. In the Richland School District fell by about 400 people, or about 4%. And that's pretty similar to the entire county. Richland County lost about 4% in population over the last 10 years. And just for comparison, the state gained about 3.5%. The chart down below just shows your youth population within each community within your district. Richland Center basically has about half of the 0 to 17 population within the district. Richland Town has about 9%, and you can see others have from 8 down to a little more than 5. And then some of the other outline, you know, just sections of towns that are within your boundaries have about 17%. What's been happening with the housing stock? Why have to say, not very much. Over the last 10 years, the primary municipalities that are within the district boundaries have added about 150 housing units. And that's about, that added about 3% to the housing stock. Over the last decade, just for comparison, the state, statewide, the state gained about 7% over the same period of time. So the gain in housing units is less than half of what happens statewide. As you see, the pie chart on the left there, I'm just showing where were those new units added. And not surprisingly, most added in Richland Center, a lot in Richland Town, some in Dayton, Henrietta, and then the other outlying towns. I know that we talked with the city administration about there's some new multifamily construction going on, apparently quite close by. And so there are going to be two 45-unit buildings, so 90 units added and all. But when you look at the whole district, which has somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000 housing units, that only is going to increase your overall housing units by about 2%. So I don't think it's going to have a lot of influence on enrollment or children. And also, it is kind of interesting, even though we sometimes think multifamily housing must have a lot of kids in it, it actually doesn't. Actually, when I looked at all of Richland County and looked at renter households, only about one out of every four renter households have children under the age of 18. So I don't just, you know, serve a, what shall I say, a seat-of-the-pants analysis. That is that you probably won't get a lot of more kids, and then you've also got the much broader community, the other 5,000 housing units and, you know, say 4,000 households of people, where the number of children may actually be going down as well. So it may not end up really being much of a gain. Yeah, both John and Stephen, when I talked to them last week at the State Education Convention, asked about changes in the Latino population. So here I did pull out the data that's been submitted to DPI from those third Friday reports. So this is the enrollment data. And the number of students has risen, they're at the very top of the graph there, with 77 10 years ago, and it was 112 last year. So, you know, added another, what is that, do the math quick, 35. So, and again, this is self-identifying to the school district about race, excuse me, race and Hispanic origin. And as a percentage of enrolled students, it has gone up from about 5.5 to about 10% at this point, but it hasn't been enough to offset the decline in non-Latino students. So what else is happening? So births in, as I mentioned earlier, 5K kindergarten, these are really good indicators for us of, you know, future students that'll be coming in. So first, a look at births. Let's see. There we go. So the black line here is the year-by-year count of births that have happened in the district area. You can see there were several years that were quite high, and this goes all the way back to 2005. So this is roughly when, you know, the kids who are now your seniors were born, around So you had several high years, but, you know, visually, you can just see over time, the number of births in the area have been declining. And so we use both a trend line to predict future births using the whole span of time, all those, all 18 years of births. And then we also, for a couple of our methods, use a shorter timeframe. And again, both are indicating that at least over the next six or seven years, we expect the number of births in the area to drop maybe 2.5 to 3.5 kids per year. So eventually, you know, you'll be having fewer kindergartners and fewer 4K kids, simply because there'll be fewer births happening in the area. And I just want to let you know, you have a lot of company. This is what's been happening in births for the entire state. And since the last peak year of births in the state, which was 2007, which happened to be just before the Great Recession started, the state had nearly 73,000 births. And you can see, the blue line here shows the annual pattern as it's gone down and down and down across the last 15 years or so. And so Wisconsin has, births have declined about 15%. And it parallels the national pattern too. That's true for the whole nation. And, you know, if the births, the number of births in the state had stayed the same as it was back around 2007 and '08, there'd be 90,000, roughly 90,000 more kids. So a lot of districts in the state are sort of just, you know, experiencing the effect of fewer kids being born and then eventually aging into the school system. So your 5K, and we use this as an indicator for one of our models that I'll talk about in a little bit. So you had a really big kindergarten class back in 2014, '15, 126. But you can see, since then, it dropped down, it stayed pretty level, dropping a little bit, just sort of eyeballing it. You can see, just sort of dropping a little bit over time. So we look at, again, we do a long-term look at this, and then we do a shorter-term pattern. And because they diverge in this case, we say, well, let's split the difference. And so when we do that, we average those two, you know, average a long-term trend and a short-term trend. It shows a slight decline in the number of kindergartners going forward, about one per year. Again, you know, what's going to happen, as with the history, and the black lines on the left of all these charts, you know, there's a lot of zigging and zagging that goes on. One thing about doing projections is, you know, we have to, we aren't, we don't know exactly when those zigs and zags are going to happen. So we tend to, you know, kind of flatten things out and trend things out. So what will happen is, of course, you'll have more fluctuation than what, you know, our nice straight lines show, but it's meant, you know, just to give you an idea of the pattern of what it looks like to us as you go forward in time. So that's sort of all the background stuff about, you know, your student history in the area, the population, what's going on with housing, births in 5K kindergarten. So how do we make use of all this stuff? What are the methods we use? Again, lots of numbers. Don't get too, I'm trying to help explain, I'll work through a couple examples on this one. So our main method of projecting is what we call grade progression ratio method. And basically, we calculate a ratio for each pair of numbers as each cohort of kids advances through their schooling. So for, as an example, hopefully this will come up. Ah, here we go. So for example, in 2015, '16, you had 100 students in the 3rd grade group. The following year, you had 106. So we just say, oh, 106 divided by 100 produces a ratio of 1.06. So just based on that one number, you know, you added 6 per 100. Another example, again, the math is easy on this one. You had 78 in the 3rd grade group in 2019. The following year, in the 4th grade group, you have 78 again. So the ratio is just 1. So what we do is, we take the column that's headed up with the 3 to 4 transition, and we average, we trend these values across different timeframes. One that covers the entire set of the past 10 years, one that covers the last five years, one that covers the last three years. And come up with different ratios which then feed into our model. So when you make all these calculations, so these are what the grade progression ratios as you go from birth to 5K, all the way up through 11 to 12. This is the baseline method, so using all of the values, all of those ratios across all 10 years of your most recent history. And then when we do that for 5, you're starting to see some similarities, even though the timeframe is different. And this is the three-year trend. Now, Sarah did, I added an extra note here, because of the pandemic, that threw off a lot of our calculations. So that first year, when we went from one year to, a lot of districts had a lot fewer kids during the first full year of the pandemic. So we basically excluded those ratios because they were making, making a mess of our calculations, for lack of a better term. And you can see, most of these ratios, what we kind of look at, I've marked the average ratio, the horizontal line of 1, so that would be, you know, from year to year. Whoop, what did I just do here? Jumping around too much here. Let's see. There we go. There we go. Okay. Generally, you know, in your district area, the student ratios kind of stick around 1. I mean, that indicates that basically you're sort of holding on to the students, but again, it's not really indicating much in the way of in-migration of new kids. You know, there might be some new kids moving in, but then there are families with kids moving out, so these ratios stay right about 1. You do see there's quite a peak in the grade 8 to grade 9 transition. Again, that's very likely that students from the Catholic school finish grade 8 and enter the public system. All right, so I know I've tossed a whole bunch of numbers at you here. So to get to the results of what we came up with for what we think the pattern's going to be over the next 10 years. And what we like to do is kind of emphasize the next five years, because the numbers are basically more reliable, the shorter timeframe that you go out in the future. But we provide projections also from year 5 out to year 10, but they're meant mostly to sort of give you a sense of direction of where things might go after that fifth So this is showing your history again, the last 10 years of students. And these are the four models and what they produced. So looking out five years, so we're 1285 right now in this school year, and in five years, we were producing a range of like 1,131 up to 1,179. So that is showing, let me just get back to my notes here so I get the right numbers here. So it's basically showing over the next five years, we're expecting, you know, a continued drop of another 100 to 150 kids. So again, the percentage change over the five years will be about 8 to 12%. So your recent history, again, this is looking at the entire student body, 4K to 12. It'll look a little different when I break it down into the separate schools. But basically, recently, you've been losing about 2% of your students every year, and that pattern, from what we're projecting, will continue probably at least for the next five years. So when we look at the individual schools you have, so the primary school, again, as I mentioned earlier, was very high about a decade ago, it's come down about 50. And our projections are showing continued decline for the next five years, a drop of about 40 to 70 students. So it dropped 50 over 10, and we're showing maybe 40 to 70 over the next five years at the youngest age groups. And that's about 11 or 11 to 20% decline. Let's see. So at the intermediate school, the 3 through 6, we're actually showing some gain here. And again, you've got fairly large cohorts this year, right now, in your first and second grades. And they'll reach 5th and 6th grade in four years, in '27, '28. So they'll help boost the intermediate school population. But again, you can see, after that, it'll drop off the following year and continue to drop, probably out beyond that five-year horizon. Your 7 and 8, again, actually it's showing a little bit of a gain over the next five years. And going, it's right now at 165. We're showing it, you know, just gaining a little bit, up to 168, maybe as high as 176. And again, I just marked on this graph where your large first and second grade classes are going to be, that'll be, you know, six years out from this year, when they'll be hitting the 7th and 8th grades. And finally, your high school. So again, you're at 438 now, and the pattern, as I mentioned before, you have some really large cohorts in your grades 9 through 12 right now. They'll be replaced by smaller groups coming in. And even though you'll be gaining some students from the Catholic school, we're still showing a decline from the current of 438 down to about 340 to 356 in five years. But then it will rebound. We expect the high school population to rebound after that a little bit. So, yeah, just to summarize, so some past trends here. As I mentioned at the start, you know, after you had that peak population close to 1,500 in 2016, '17, your total FTE students in the area has been declining about 2% per year. Births in the area have been declining, that's very similar statewide pattern. Your long-term kindergarten FTE has been declining and is likely to continue to decline slightly, and part of that is there'll just be fewer births in the area. And as I mentioned, your grade progression ratios are largely around 1, except for that 8 to 9 transition. And so it's indicative of not much in-migration of families with children. And as I showed, Latino students are increasing, but they're not enough to offset decreases in your non-Hispanic population. Again, just to summarize some of what I was talking about the very end with those last graphs, looking out five years. Again, based on our projections, looking out five years, still expect that minus 2% decrease for the entire student body to occur at least through the next five years. Primary school students may decline 2 to 4% per year, and it's partly Primary school students may decline 2 to 4% per year, and it's partly due to the fact that you're going to have this large first and second grade cohort that ages forward and ages out of the primary school, and smaller cohorts will replace them. The intermediate school, we predicted pretty much remain level, maybe a bit of an increase over the next five years. Middle school, again, pretty much holding the same, but as you saw in the graphs, a little bit of bounce up and down. High school students, we predict to decline about 4% annually over the next five years as smaller cohorts replace the graduating ones, but the high school population may recover further out in time. So, that's a lot. So if you have any questions, I can answer them now, and I'm always available if you have other questions that come up later. We're always happy to have discussions with the school districts that we work with.
Have you known this comparable data with other school districts our size? Are they kind of trending the same as where we are, or is it kind of mixed bag?
Yeah, yeah, I have to say, I mean, for the smaller rural school districts that we work with, it's kind of a similar pattern. You know, there are districts that are more suburban, like surrounding Madison, that, well, they use a grow a lot. I mean, like the Middleton School District, for example, uses a grow like 4.5% a year for, you know, like 15 years, but even that is slowing down now, where they're basically having, at this point, kind of like leveling. So yeah, it is. We're seeing a lot of smaller rural districts following a very similar pattern to what you're experiencing here in Richland.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. So would it be fair to say that down the road, we're hoping for one or two or both, either highly encourage people to increase the birth rate in our area? Or secondly, make our community more marketable to draw families in, which in turn then may include housing units, et cetera? But are those kind of the two methods to not continue to see a decline?
Yeah, right, and good luck on the first one. You know, one thing I did notice in looking at your data, since getting this presentation ready, was particularly in your district, what really caught my eye is the percentage of kids who go to the private schools here. It's quite high, it's like 1 out of every 5 kids. And well, I should preface that, the two private schools, Eagle School and St. Mary's, if I got that right, you know, they're here in Richland Center, I mean, they could be drawing kids in from outside the district. So they're not strictly drawing kids just within your district, but it was quite noticeable that in like, particularly like 4K to 8 classes, their counts of kids is like 20% of the total pool of students in those. I mean, I don't know, you know, I'm not suggesting anything policy related to that, it was just something that really popped out at me when I was looking at the numbers. I mean, I know you do have quite an imbalance also in the open enrollment, and, you know, by using this sort of FTE student model, you know, we tried to account for, as I said, students who you might potentially have enrolling, and, but that was also quite noticeable too, that the net open enrollment in some of your years, in recent years, has been like 150 or almost 200, which I have to say, that, those are really large numbers compared to other districts I've seen. So that, I guess, you know, is just sort of what I observed, and you can sort of make a decision on, you know, what you might do differently if you're wanting to hopefully increase your enrollment here in the district.
Another question.
Sure.
Historically speaking, from your experience, where you take a snapshot of the birth rate trend over the last decade, and you say statewide the decline, and nationwide for that matter, can you take that same snapshot at any point in your historical data and mimic it to see that we've been through this as a society before, but then it bounces back up to the high watermark?
Yeah, I mean, so, let's see. So I mean, well, I mean, and one very large example was the Great Depression in the 30s, where both the birth rates and the number of births declined. Then along, you know, along came the baby boom, so any of us here were born about 1946 to 1964, we were part of a big increase in births, and then there was a decline in births for a while after the baby boom. But then what started happening, when the baby boomers all started having kids, so number of births went up. So yeah, sort of, the closest analogy, and unfortunately, you know, it is going back quite a long way in history now, but really kind of the Great Depression, really. There was that long 12 to 15-year period where births really declined a lot across those years. That's about the closest analogy, so, yeah, you know, attitudes of young people about having children have just really shifted in the last 10 to 15 years, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On to action items. The donation of money to RCIS Greenhouse Fund from Joan Woodman Horton Foundation.
Yeah, so we did receive a $5,000 donation for the intermediate school and the greenhouse from the Woodman Foundation. Looking to accept that gift.
Is there a motion to accept the donation of $5,000 for the RCIS Greenhouse from the Joan Woodman Horton Foundation, per policy 7230?
I'll make motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Wirths, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Dowdner, discussion? Aye?
Aye.
Epstein.
Aye.
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 Right. On to the renewal of Drug-Free Communities Grant.
Okay, so you've heard Mrs. Raisler speak a couple of different times here in the last couple of months on the updates from the Drug-Free Communities Grant. We are at the end, are approaching the end of our fifth fiscal year, and the grant application for years 6 through 10 will be coming out very shortly, as in weeks, and so we want to make sure that we're on top of this and getting all of our ducks in a row. This is something the district wants to continue. I added in the memo here, and I'll just state it for the record, I'm in great support of this grant, generally speaking, from our community. I think it does wonderful things to try to minimize the impact of some of these introductory drugs to our students and our youth and our community. I have stated that, you know, it has been a grant that has been somewhat problematic. It's shifted organizations at the federal level, some of the fiscal years have changed. We have gone through, as Mr. Traxel alluded to earlier, we've gone through some transition in the business office. All of that has posed to be a problem, but I have said, and I've told Betsy this as well, I don't want to see this grant go away from our community, right? And so if the only option is that the school district become the fiduciary of it for the next five years, I'm in full support of that because I want this grant to stay in our community. I do feel that it would be in the grant's best interest and our community's best interest if it was housed through one of the local governmental agencies, whether it's Health and Human Services. I know a lot of communities that have this grant have it housed there, or city, or law enforcement, one of those places, because it's not just Richland School District students that benefit from the grant, it's anybody in Richland County. And so I want to see the grant continue, and if the only option is that we continue it, I'm in full support of that. If we could get one of those other agencies to take it over from the fiduciary standpoint, I think that that is the ideal situation. We would continue to work and support with the grant, even provide space in our buildings for them to operate. But, you know, I do want to see it continue, and so my recommendation is that we renew the grant, and then, you know, with the help of Mrs. Raisler, that we can maybe explore some of those other options from a fiduciary to a fiduciary, to see if they'd be willing to take it on. There are some headaches and hoops to jump through if we're going to change the fiduciary within a fiscal year, excuse me, within the fiscal term of the grant, but it can be done, and we just have to jump through those hoops if it came to fruition. So I do think it will be easier each year that we go, but the time of the grant has not been extensive, more, it's not been exacerbated by the changes in the district office. So it's a good grant, I'd love to continue to support it, but it is time consuming. So questions do you have regarding that, or maybe you need to make a motion first, I guess?
Does the board have any further questions before I make a motion? Entertain a motion, really? Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of the Drug-Free Communities Grant, if awarded for five additional years until another fiscal agent can be established?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Dickman, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey, any discussion?
I just wanted to say that I have attended several of the meetings held at the Health and Human Service. My only concern with the switching fiscal agents is, so a lot of times, the students are the ones that actually come and report, and I see the passion of the project, and my only concern is switching it away from the school, while I respect that it's time-consuming and things, I just worry would lose some of its effectiveness by switching it out. So that would be my only concern, because I have attended several of them, and I just watched the community come, and they really are there to support the students, so I just wanted to make that statement.
Any other discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Naye.
Aye.
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 Aye. The resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit for four years for non-recurring purposes.
Okay, so the next three agenda items are all pertaining to referendum, referendum potentially in April, that we discussed at our last board meeting. The first agenda item would be that non-recurring referendum, where it would start off at 2.3 million in '24-'25, and then escalate by $100,000 each year until it reaches 2.6 million in the year '27-'28, at which time the referendum would come to an end. The second one, which we'll get to in a little bit, is for the capital improvement project. And then the last agenda item, just so the board is aware, is really the approval of the ballot language specifically stating that we would be going in April, on April 2nd, and that's the ballot language. I will say that both the agenda items and the specific wording in the motion, those are sent directly from Quarles and Brady, and those are the exact wording that we need to have, as they've stated, to make this official and legit.
Is there a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit for four years for non-recurring purposes?
So move?
Motion made by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Huntimer, any discussion, questions? Mr. Traxel?
Aye.
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 Aye. Ten D, the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $27,160,000.
So that $27,160,000, that is the amount that the board had directed me to draft the resolution for at our last meeting. That would include those top seven priorities, including upgrades to our auditorium, and those would be, that would be financed in the way of general obligation bonds, which is how the school district borrows money. So it would be, again, in the amount of $27,160,000 for the school facility improvements consisting of safety and security, site improvements with ADA compliance, remodeling and upgrades to the district tech ed space, roofing improvements at the high school, district-wide capital maintenance, infrastructure, NHVAC improvements, including air conditioning to the buildings where it's needed, and auditorium upgrades, as well as acquisition of furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. Again, $27,160,000 in twenty-year bonds.
Is there a motion to approve an initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $27,160,000?
I'll make that.
Motion made by Mr. Huntimer, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey, any discussion?
I would like to share some information that Mr. Bob Frank shared, just a thought process. We talked about adding or not adding the auditorium. He made a point that the auditorium is really a, just a really large classroom, that it's a place for learning, it's a place for our students, they spend quite a bit of time in there, that the upgrades that are needed are very similar to what we have in the tech ed department or in our room. So I just wanted to bring that to light with the phone.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
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 Right. To 10E, the resolution provided for a referendum election, the questions of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit for four years for non-recurring purposes, and an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $27,160,000.
So this would be a combination of the last two resolutions that were approved, and again, this is for the referendum going to, specifically on the April 2nd ballot, and voted on by the stakeholders of the community.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Huntimer, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman, discussion? Mr. Huntimer?
Aye.
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 All making motion, we move into closed session pursuant to Section 19.851(c) and or (f) of the Wisconsin Statute 118.125 to consider employment, promotion, station of employees, discussed individual employee hiring, administrator evaluations, and to discuss individual student discipline, student enrollment applications, and individual pupil information related to those applications. Board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Aye.
Seconded by Mr. Traxel, discussion? Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
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 Thank you.